...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you. Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Hager?
Here.
Mr. Rucker?
Dr. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Danforth?
Here.
Mrs. Hodges?
Here.
Mrs. Crispin?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Thank you. Is there any audience participation?
Yes. Todd Brockett would like to address the board.
Pass.
Jeff Leek would like to address the board.
My name is Jeff Leek, teacher at Lafayette, NEA large representative, and most important parent of three children in the San Jose School District. I've spoken here many times before and shown my support on many issues. Tonight, I want to address some of the challenges that face us. There's a great divide between the district and the community. In a short period of time, we will attempt to maintain our operating levy at its current level. I regretfully say at this time it is not looking too good. I'm frightened to think about the negative effects losing this levy will have on our students and my children. We need to start working with the community to clear up confusion and gain supporters back. Along with the supporters in the community, I believe that it is time to start working to gain back the trust of the biggest supporters of the school district, the personnel. At the present time, there is a division within the district some believe as large as that with the community. Not all, but many are deeply upset. There is a lot of money that is distributed on the top of a person's normal salary. Some administrators with near or at six-figure incomes are making more in stipends alone than many of our support staff do in an entire year. What has touched the nerve most is the disbursement of the additional $5,000 stipend to raise administrative morale. I am not against compensating our administrators as much as possible. As my friends, I hope they can make all they can. As a fellow employee, my only complaint is the uneven increase in wages that have benefited one small group over the others. I don't know many teachers, if any, who get in this profession for the money. We do this for the kids. Often I think that teachers care so much about our students that we avoid standing up for ourselves on issues of salary and benefits. I know in San Joseph, we will never be the highest-paid teachers around. What I hope is to get back on track within the goal one set of 90 to 95 percent of teacher salaries in the Kansas City area. Right now, veteran teachers are not even close. Just a few miles down the road in Platt City, and I use Platt City to be more realistic than Park Hill, North Kansas City, Liberty, a teacher with my years of experience in education would make 30 percent more than I do here. In the same district, an administrator would make around 5 percent more. Each year, we lose teachers to the Kansas City area for this reason. Despite the warnings, we have not lost one administrator to the Kansas City area in a horizontal move. Yes, we've lost administrators, but in each case, the move was into a better position. There was no lateral move from principal to principal or for more money like we have with teachers going down the road. The problem is, we have not increased our teacher compensation at the same level we have increased our administrator compensation. From 2010 to 2013, most veteran teachers like myself have seen a total increase in salary of 1 percent. A major portion of this is moving to a higher step with each year experience. During the same time period, most administrator salaries have grown around 8 percent. Throw in the $5,000 field goods stipend, and you're around the area of 14 to 19 percent. A major contributor to this was the loss of the Teacher Career Ladder. According to the 2013-14 salary schedule, administrators still includes the career ladder compensation in their salary. 2011 marked the year where veteran teachers took around an 8 percent pay cut as the career ladder step three went from $5,000 to an ELP of 1,500. This year marks the final year of extended learning program dropping my salary another 3 percent. On both accounts, this was not rolled into our salary. This is gone. I know our building principals put in long hours and have many responsibilities. I'm not trying to take away from anything that they do. They're compensated for that. Not with the $5,000 stipends, but with the additional $40,000 to $50,000 of salary over an average teacher. In defense, it has been said many people get stipends for various duties. There is a difference between a stipend and an extra duty contract. I point out the difference because most extra duty contracts for coaches and sponsors involve spending hundreds of additional hours of work away from home and family. This is much different than taking your family to a few more community events and ballgames. I do not blame administrators for wanting to keep what they have. I understand the frustration they are going through. We have been going through it for a few years now. We have seen salaries cut, contract time increase, professional development, and work outside the school increase. Whenever you lose something, it hurts. Career ladder covered some teachers' extra work in compensation that had meant so much to teachers. It was vacation money, college tuition for teachers and their children. In my house, one year it was remodeling a new baby room, a down payment for a better vehicle for our family, money towards a new home, and most often, it was probably just used to help pay down some bills. I remember every career ladder check I got and what it went to. Many teachers lived paycheck to paycheck. That was very evident in the past few weeks with the trouble depositing our final ELP checks. My dad always stressed upon, my brother and I, the difference between fair and equal. I do not expect to make the same as an administrator. What I do hope for is fairness in the process. We consider ourselves a big family. What family takes from one child to give to another? I'm not saying to take away from what the administrators have been compensated. I am asking that teachers' compensation increase at the same rate. And a dream for me would be to restore career ladder. Thank you.
Good evening, President Hager, members of the school board, Dr. Zabanka, and members of the community. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak openly and freely. It is a privilege to be able to speak for myself. I'm Stacy Howey. I teach fourth grade at Humboldt Elementary School, and I've been with the school district for 12 years. As I reflect over the past 12 years, I've seen ups and downs. Most recently, I have attended the Capturing Kids' Hearts seminar, and I am once again reminded about why I teach and what it truly looks like. Teaching is about teamwork and collaboration. Teamwork means cooperative effort. During this seminar, I found it quite refreshing how collaboration amongst educators, administrators, teachers, and support staff can work together to get to a child's heart. Capturing kids' hearts and our past have shown cooperative effort. Did you know the opposite of cooperative effort is preventing and obstructing? Preventing and obstructing. As a teacher, I cannot relate to those terms nor agree with them, especially when it comes to educating children. We are in the business of educating kids. I have an idea that many have lost that concept. I am tired of distractions and obstructions. Mr. Brockett, in the past, you have said you speak for teachers. I am a teacher, and you do not speak for me. I am a teacher who chooses teamwork and collaboration over obstruction. Thank you.
Jackie Grumwood? Hello. I come to you today as a concerned parent and a representative for many Field families. Eugene Field is overcrowded and literally out of room. The school was built originally for two classrooms per grade level with reasonable class sizes. Unfortunately, we're sitting on three sections currently, a first, second, third, with a huge potential for our incoming kindergarten needing a third section. With that being said, we don't have room for the kindergarten without bringing in, I guess, a learning cottage, which means with this being said, it also means each of these sections will continue to need a third section, so fourth next year, fifth next year, sixth next year, and there's really no room. So, we're worried about the new buildings that sit with empty classrooms and ours being overcrowded. So, we hope you will consider shifting some of our kids either to Coleman or to Oak Grove, where there will be empty classrooms to give our classrooms a little break. And currently, we're standing at about 375 incoming students, which does not include students who come right when school starts. So, that's a concern as well. Our fifth grade is kind of teetering on the bubble as well for needing a third section. So, everything's being shifted as well as it can be, and we appreciate those things. And we will have art again in a classroom, but it's going to be on our stage, which then takes away the stage. So, you kind of feel like, why not just throw them in the janitor's closet or do something like that, because there's no room. And really, the art, which is a way of a whole solution, we're happy to actually have a classroom, but two concerns are that you're taking away the stage. Art is going to only be three days instead of four days, and we have 17 sections to try to accommodate now only 50 minutes instead of 60 minutes, which with that being said, with art only three days a week, then they have to go on the stages in the cafeteria. In the cafeteria, they'll have to have art during lunch, which is extremely loud in the lunchroom. But if we go to four days a week, then the art teacher won't have to teach during art, and we can still use the stage as needed because you won't have to put up a big wall. So, those are just two of our recommendations that hopefully... And our other thing is, we feel like this is an unnecessary expense if you have to build this classroom when there's empty rooms in other buildings. So, hopefully, you will consider the logical solution of shifting some of the boundaries off. And a lot of frustrations from the parents that I hear from are that we all emailed when the boundaries were happening and gave all these recommendations, and many, many, many families emailed and nothing happened. So, hopefully, you will listen and make some changes. Thank you.
Betsy Bing would like to address the board.
Good afternoon, President Hager, Board of Education members, community, and friends. I'm Betsy Bing, and I'm thankful to have the chance to speak for myself. I'm a T-shirt Western Learning Center and have been in the San Jose School District for 21 years. If you have been to our website, you'll notice the five basic success listed. Attendance and attitude affects achievement. Attendance means show up. That's half the battle. Next is attitude. Attitude can build up or destroy very quickly. Unfortunately, the negative divisive attitude of one has begun to permeate our culture productivity. I am here to remind us that just as a negative divisive attitude can spread detrimentally, a positive attitude can spread just as quickly. I challenge all of you, especially the media and our board, to focus on the positive things employees of the San Jose School District do on a daily basis. There is no room in our world of educating students for negativity and divisiveness. Other messages heard from tonight's previous board meetings and for teachers are all about being negative and divisive. That is not the case. And with that said, Mr. Brockett, I am also a teacher, and you don't speak for me, and NEA does not speak for me. Not everyone, everything that is seen in print, on social media, or in the newspaper is truthful. Just because it's in print doesn't mean it's true. Just because people spout statistics doesn't mean it's true. I don't receive stipends for any extra duties. The only stipend I get is for my National Support Certification, which I worked for. I don't have any extra planning period. I don't get paid a stipend because I have more than two perks. Also, as a member of MSTA, I can tell you right now, Mr. Brockett, that no MSTA representative has ever received any monies for being on MSTA representative, for being in leadership, no money for the number of members we have, no monies for the recruitment of new members. I'm not sure you can also necessarily say the same thing about you or your organization. The situation that deals with the stipends and all that needs to be handled professionally, respectfully, and open-mindedly, and not attacking our fellow colleagues as Mr. Brockett and others have done. It needs to be resolved based on facts, not made-up facts, so that San Jose again can unite in one goal, and that's educating our children. Thank you.
The next item is approval of the agenda. Second. Dennis, approve. Dan, second. Is there any discussion? Mary Dunn, would you call the board?
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
The next item is the consent agenda. Is there any items that anyone would like to pull for further discussion? Not hearing any. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Sub move.
Any discussion? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rucker? Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Next item, consideration is health supply bids.
Sub move.
Second. Is there any questions for Mr. Hartigan on that? Any discussion?
Mr. Hartigan? Could you stand up just for a second and give us a quick overview?
I'm sorry. I want a quick overview.
I'm sorry. Would you just give us a quick overview of what the health bid is?
Sure. What we are...
Would you please go with mine?
Every year, Health Services Department submits a bid to various vendors for our health supplies and our athletic trainer supplies, and this year, we have submitted a bid totaling $9,657, and that is actually down from the last several years. We've done inventory in our buildings, with our athletic trainers, being in with our athletic directors, and also in the health services area, we've been able to have a little bit of a decrease, and we're kind of happy about that, but yet, we're getting product and supplies that our athletic trainers are going to be happy with.
Can you, do you go right off the top of your head what the savings is from your hard work this year?
It's a little over $1,000.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any further questions? Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
The next item is the telephone systems for the Carden Park and Oak Grove schools. Is there a motion?
Second.
Is there any questions for Mr. Hartigan?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Hartigan. A lot of times, what we do is we have these conversations and meetings, and then we just go ahead in the board meeting, and I think it's important that if you would address, if you would, why the cost of $34,000 for this phone system?
Well, that was the only bid submitted to us from Progressive Telcom. The other two that were out of town, they chose not to submit a bid. Generally, what happens is if they see that there's going to be a local bidder, oftentimes, they won't bid because they've got to travel, they've got to send people in, put them up in the tailroom, et cetera. And so, again, they wait to see if local companies will pick up a bid packet, and if they do, again, oftentimes, they simply won't bid. And we'll see that on the metal fencing as well. The company from Illinois turned around and chose not to bid because they would have had the shipping cost there.
Oh, could you share, when you talked at the meeting about this new phone system, some of the, because it's been a long time since we've updated a phone system in our district, could you share some of the magic that this one does?
Well, actually, we spent about a year looking at various systems, and this is a digital and IP-based phone system. The Wynn system that's currently in place is 14 years old. The company's been out of business for four years, so you can't get parts on the aftermarket. They're just basically gone. By putting these two new systems in the new schools, it buys us a little time by cannibalizing the phones in Hall and some possibly at Noise to keep those other systems going for a little while. The bells and whistles really are, everything that's happened in the last 14 years, email to voice, voicemail, caller ID, just simply all the bells and whistles that modern phone systems have that you just couldn't get 14 years ago. Probably the biggest deal for us will be, over time, again, because the other system is 14 years old, we're going to need to replace in all of the schools. We'll do the calculations. Once we see that about 80 percent of our telephone traffic is between building to building, if being an IP-based system, we can run the phone system off our fiber network, and therefore, we would not have to buy dial tone. And so, if you get to a situation, and we're in three years, you pay off the cost of the entire phone system. Every year thereafter is saving. So, that's what we hope to do.
Thank you very much.
Are there any further questions? Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Okay, the next item is the materials for the athletic complex fence replacement in high school. Sub move.
Second.
Are there any questions?
I would like, Mr. Hartigan, could you give us a little history on the fence we're going to be replacing? By the way, please, please be sure and let everyone know how we save some of the costs we're using some of our money.
Yeah, exactly. This is a joint venture between the professional staff at the maintenance operations department and Hilliard Votech students, and really, our part was to issue the bids, get the materials, and then staff will help set posts and do some of the work. But again, it was a joint project to involve students. Fencing is really in very, very, very poor shape, and these guys at Ventinol, they tell you about it, they came up with the idea, instead of just going out and buying standard fencing, why don't we turn it into a learning experience as well?
Well, a few things. One, the fencing there now is not safe. It was broken, just in very poor shape, especially around the football field. Another problem with it is if you've ever been to a Ventin High School game, there's not enough room to get between the fence and the stands to walk through there. We had two instances last year where we had to stop games because of lightning, and it takes about 20 minutes to get everybody off the stands to get them out of there. So, that's a very dangerous situation as well. So, safety was number one concern, and then looks obviously is number two.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. We have fence building at Hilliard. Do we have that here?
Well, the cat crew actually did all the drawings, and there's, so that was the big thing. And then we also have the welding crew and the carpentry crew probably going to help that. Dennis, is there any work out right here?
So, I guess that answers the question.
And I believe there's going to be a cardinal head. Is that right?
There'll be two or three different designs in the fence on the board of games.
It definitely won't be a sham.
It's not a sham.
You don't know! Oops!
Okay, any further questions? Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
I believe we've talked about this before, the HVAC for this boardroom.
You make a motion to accept that.
So, second.
Are there questions for Mr. Hartigan?
Mr. Hartigan, is it warmer here to you?
We had to make a choice tonight as to whether or not you wanted to be heard or you wanted to be warm. And so, we thought you wanted to be heard, and it's unfortunate that we have to be in that situation. Since we talked last, the bearings did go out. That's when it kicked on a few minutes ago, and you heard how loud it was. I sent a text down to her right away and said, you got to turn it off. It is a little bit warm.
Thank you, sir.
Now, to my ears, you're speeding up. Some things were moved around, and with CIP money, that we're able to now, we're fine to do this.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I just want us to make sure we don't forget that all of our schools aren't air-conditioned yet. Let's make sure that we get those kids cooler also. Should have been done by now, but we need to stay focused on our air conditioning for all those schools.
Mr. Hartigan, how many schools are we going to do this?
Well, the final two will be Ellison and Markley. Well, if you go back to the original directive, there was a difference between permanent and temporary air conditioning. And so, the original list that had permanent air conditioning would be completed this summer. Obviously, we're going to have some discussions because it makes the assumption that the other buildings may not be in service and if so, for how long. And so, again, this goes back to a plan several years ago that hasn't been updated or discussed since. But those 11 buildings that were originally targeted will be finished, and then we've got to decide what happens to the other facilities.
Okay, Mr. Hartigan, I suggest that we get the final two done, and then we start that conversation quickly. Okay?
Any further questions? Debbie, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Danforth?
Yes.
Mrs. Crispin?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges? Yes.
Next item is administrative contracts.
Mr. Chairman, I got a motion I want to make before we even start. I make the motion that we do away with stipends from this point forward, that not including, with the exception of the doctorate degree, that we put all these extra duties into the contracts, minus the $5,000 meet and greet that goes away, with a 2 percent increase across the board. Everybody gets the same thing and one stamp, with the recommendation from the administration to come back to us by January with appropriate salaries for a school district this size with the same kind of budget.
Mr. President, Mr. Stevens, members of the board, the, currently from a purely parliamentary procedure right now, you have a motion on the floor which has not been seconded. It is the board's pleasure for me to review some legal issues with you at this point in time prior to whether you see if that motion should be seconded or not. I'm happy to do that. It might help clarify things, but that's, Mr. Stevens made a motion, so he would have to, I think, agree that that's appropriate for me to do that at this time.
Or is there a second? Or is there a second?
Okay, we need a second. We have to get it. Hold on, second.
Here we go. Yes. A second? Go ahead.
What I would suggest that I do, you know, with Mr. Robb and I, my partners here as well, is to go through, you have a motion on the floor, but to go through some options that I believe are available to the board, given where you are at this point in time, and outline those options and then the board can determine how it wants to proceed from that point forward. First, I guess I need to do a mea culpa with respect to correcting a factual issue. I communicated with the board that I had understood from my communications with Mr. Flowers, the HR director, that principal and vice principal contracts had been quote, "sent out." That is not correct. Mr. Flowers and I simply had a misunderstanding between emails and I stand corrected on that issue. It's my understanding that principal and or vice principal contracts have not been sent out. So I wanted to correct that. I thought, understood they had, and I wanted to correct that for your information, for your determinations tonight.
But they were available.
My understanding, is that correct, Mr. Flowers?
They were available to principals and vice principals.
Is that correct?
How were they available to, weren't they sent out?
If I...
I understand, I'm sorry. I understand that they were made available. Is, Mr. Flowers, could you address that please?
And I need to say, if I misunderstood, Mr. Flowers, you can talk to us here.
We talked about them being made available, but I guess only through the direction of the president of the board. I don't feel that, speaking on my behalf, I want to be the Dr. Zawanka, without giving further direction by the total board, that those are still only in my office.
Yeah, and Mr. Hyger sent an email to the board sharing that based on that, based on his recommendation, we would not send back the board.
So, excuse me. So you're saying that through the direction of the board president, even with that direction, you didn't send it out because the full board had removed that direction?
Correct. Me and Mr. Hyger and I spoke on that evening, I believe it was the 14th, and decided to wait to not send those out, to look at full direction and verify. I believe Mr. Hyger did follow up with the board, we were weaker so we could look at that.
As we were waiting for the stipend issue to be decided. So, having made my confession, I'll go ahead. Where you are at the present is that you adopted a motion on March, after March 24th meeting, in which you approved a salary schedule, salary book, that included a salary schedule for teachers, a salary schedule for administrators, and an extra duty slash travel stipend schedule as well. That is your current status. That's what you approved on March 24th. Based on that motion, the administration issued contracts to all teachers, some of which included, in some special instances, travel stipends. For example, if Mr. Rucker was a middle school band instructor and had to travel from, among the three middle schools, then he or she, in this case, he, would, was entitled to a travel stipend. That was part and parcel of what you approved and in fact, the teachers' contracts, which in some cases included some travel stipends, have already been submitted, signed, and are back in the door, if you will. And those are legal binding obligations of this district and in our combined opinion, mixed in mine, you can't change those even if you wanted to because they've been signed. So, what are your options with respect, in our opinion, with respect to administrator There's a motion on the floor, but when you hear what we have to say, you'll have to determine how you want to proceed. The board could move, if it was its desire, to amend the March 24th vote to substitute the indexed administrator's salary, which has been at least presented in some fashion to you, for that of the salary schedule for administrators approved at the March 24th meeting, with the condition, as we understand it, I will stand corrected if that's not correct, that it would eliminate all administrative extra duty and travel stipends. It is our understanding that the quote-unquote indexed administrator's salary schedule involves a 2% increase to the administrators plus a step comparable to what I understood the teachers received. That's one option. If the board is not prepared or comfortable to go forward tonight, you could elect to defer action on the administrative contracts, but you're on a tight time schedule because you have a budget to approve and I believe that meeting is scheduled for June 23rd. I would defer to Mr. Flowers and Dr. Zawanka with respect to how much time the administration would need. If you decide to come back at a special call meeting to resolve this issue, in order for them, depending upon your vote, what you decided, to have the budget ready. I don't know what that is. If no action is taken tonight or at a future meeting prior to that budget being approved, then your vote, prior vote on March 24th, after the administrative salary schedule and extra duty travel remains in effect, in my, our opinion, that's what you approved, which includes, again, as I understand, looking at the salary schedule and the extra duty night duty travel stipend schedule that was approved at that time. It appears to us that that would include the $5,000 stipend. This puts you in somewhat kind of a no man's land, you know, you don't have administrative contracts out, but that's what you previously approved. You also have an issue that would need to be addressed in that the administration presented to you with respect to the night duty, extra duty type of schedule. A highlighted version, if you remember, of various types of stipends, or whatever words you want to use, that had not previously been presented to you and approved by, so those have not been approved by. Based upon my discussions with Mr. Flowers literally earlier this afternoon, it is my understanding, and Mr. Flowers can correct me, that all of those highlighted situations are, with the exception of a car vehicle allowance, or whatever you want to call it, for Mr. Hartigan, with the exception of that one, every other one involves either a teacher or the staff person and not administrator. And as I said earlier, if I'm correct, that if you use the indexed salary for administrators, Mr. Hartigan's car allowance or whatever, would also be, go away because all that is designed, if that's what you decide to do, go into that schedule. Now, all that said, from a parliamentary issue, any vote to amend the prior, prior motion, in our opinion, requires a two-thirds majority vote, which means five votes to pass. So, from a formality, if the board or any member of the board desires to make a motion, it is our opinion that to be proper, it needs to be in the form of a motion to amend the prior, the prior March 24th vote by A, B, C, D.
Mr. Briggs, so I just want to make sure if I understand it. So, are you saying that before we can accept Mr. Stevens' motion, we need to amend what we've already done?
Well, it is our opinion that the board could, or a board member could move to amend the prior motion by doing X, Y, and Z, so that if you're voting to amend it, you're amending it by doing A, B, C, D.
So...
But that would require five votes to do that.
So we're voting to, we could vote to amend our prior contract vote with five votes by making a motion that Mr. Stevens, in the amendment, in our amendment motion.
With respect that, Mr. Stevens' motion was not a motion to amend, as I heard it. He did not, even though it were...
Correct.
Ms. Danforth?
Mr. Briggs, I certainly appreciate your counsel on those options there, but one of the things that I realize is not on the table is a recommendation from the ad hoc committee, which should most definitely be one of the options there.
Right. The proposal that Dennis has given is not what the ad hoc committee had recommended. They did, yes. They recommended doing away with the $5,000 stipends and the 2% raise, did not the indexed thing that you mentioned, which is a little bit different. I thought you said go with that index that they had.
I thought you did too.
Are you sure you saw the motion tonight?
I'm sorry if I misunderstood.
Mr. Stevens moved to do away with the stipends with the exception of the doctorate extra duties with contracts, the meet and greet stipend and one, and one step with recommendation to come back to the board with appropriate salaries.
I guess it was the salaries. I assume that was the list.
First of all, let's get something straight. That $5,000, we didn't, the board didn't know about this until Fred came forward and told us. And then, that's what started this mess in the beginning.
That's the exact thing that happened.
And then, pardon?
That's not what happened, but, excuse me.
I mean, you knew about it before? Well, whatever. And then I see it came back again under night duty and mileage, under this idea. And again, I didn't know about it in the night duty and mileage until Mr. Flowers told me and I about hit the ceiling. Here we are again. It's like Groundhog's Day around here. Look, they got this stipend the first time, Fred apologized, done deal. It's got to go away now. We're not, we're not, you don't get it forever. And I don't care who puts it in there, that wasn't agreed by us again, second time. That needs to go away. But I will say this, our principals and vice principals have done a great, this guy Barry Johnson was up here, you don't want to know how hard he works. He's done a great job. We've got principals over here. We are, we are treating them like criminals, like they did somewhere. They didn't do nothing wrong. They probably didn't even know they got the money until they got it. It's got to stop. These stipends as a whole are a mistake. As far as I know, they've been going back since the 70s. Let's get rid of them. But give them a decent pay. We were supposed to have contracts out May 14th. What is this, June 8th or 19th? Let's, let's just, I mean, that's what my motion is. Let's do away with the $5,000. Let's give them the extra dues. Yeah, they're going to get mileage, okay? But we don't want them to take a decrease in pay again. They already think they're losing $5,000, which they're not, in my opinion, but now you want to mess around with their mileage. Look, they've done a great job. My motion is to do away with stipends, put the remaining items that have not been approved into their salaries, and from now, this point forward, pay people a decent wage and give them, if you decide to give them a 2%, everybody gets the same. And I think that's what the committee wanted too. The committee wanted the same for everybody. And that's why I made the motion. Now, if you need me to put some words in there, like you suggested, I just want to make sure I'm not cutting them out of something else. I mean, is that right? I mean...
Mr. Chairman, I think the confusion becomes, Mr. Stevens, when you talk about the stipends to go away. My understanding, the principal's recommendation was the stipends would be rolled in, to go away meant, rolled into their salary.
Yes.
They said, take away the $5,000.
Yes.
Any other stipend that you have rolled into the salary except the doctorate stipend. That's my understanding, my recommendation.
Correct. That was my, that was my motion.
And every administrator, every single administrator will lose money under that proposal.
I know they will.
But that was, and I support that. I mean, I think they're, they're working hard to show that they want to move forward.
Have we lost any administrators right now because of this?
You will get two resignations probably by the end of the week, but that's...
We've already lost two.
Yes, sir. And probably two more after that, to four more. But I do know you'll have two resignations by the end of the week.
Well, the ad hoc committee has more than one recommendation. That was the first one, was to remove the $5,000 stipends, which would require the two-thirds vote to rescind our previous vote and then give them also a 2% raise like the teachers were getting. Later in further meeting, when we looked through all those highlighted stipends that you were mentioning, Mr. Briggs, all of those were approved except for the travel ones that were on the last page. The ad hoc committee wanted to recommend that those not be approved as stipends anymore, but that people need to remit receipts and be reimbursed for travel at 55 cents a mile. The IRS approved rate. So that's something to consider as an option.
Yeah. Can I answer her? Can I? Go ahead.
Well, my question is back to the original motion out there because it sounds like your original motion is the one where you do away with stipends, not meaning really to do away with the stipends, but to fold all that money in, which is indeed the indexed schedule.
Well, the indexed schedule, I took a look at it, it's...
Is it not, is the folding of this before you, because I know you did a lot of work, a lot of math on that. Is that, if we're folding those stipends into that, into their salary, then that is where the indexed schedule came from? Is that correct?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Flowers because I was not at all of those meetings, but he was. And it was my understanding in conversation with him that it was community members who asked for that. Correct, Mr. Flowers?
Correct. And to answer to Ms. Danforth's question, the answer is yes. That would be the admin index that was presented in February. It was discussed at the ad hoc committee. I presented it the second day to the ad hoc committee for their preview. And I also believe that in regard to the committee that I sat on and listened to, their concern was, as Mr. Stevens said, to remove the $5,000 stipend, to add 2% and a step. So you could do that with that, with the index as given. You could take $5,000 off the initial contract, add 2%, move it to the most appropriate step, and then step one time. And I believe, in that regard, I've done the math. Every administrator will lose money.
When that index was brought to us in February, the board didn't decide not to take it further. So I'm surprised that it's back because we did not take action on it at that time. That's not a question, that's just a statement there. Well, can I ask, since I wasn't on the board, then Kathy and I have no idea what conversations happened before. So why was it that we chose not to do that?
As I recall, it was, it did not specify, it wasn't clear on what extra duty stipends were out there. And it was, I mean, we just had for one meeting, I believe, to look at, and we had to choose whether we use that index or keep this... and we had to choose whether we use that index or keep the same type of salary schedule along with the extra duty stipends.
Okay, can I answer that?
Yes.
You must also keep in mind that back in February, actually on February 3rd was when this board first was confirmed that there were 54 $5,000 stipends given out without board approval. It was a week later that this board also found out that there were eight promotions that were also given without board approval. So then in February, when this index schedule came to us, we were in quite a flux. We had just found out that we spent over a quarter million dollars, more than that, and we hadn't even come to the part where we had learned about the superintendent's council with those $16,900 stipend amounts, we'd even come to that part yet, so to throw an index schedule at that time was not embraced by this, by this board, simply because we were finding out things pretty rapidly. So can I ask this, with this index, does this index include principals, assistant principals, and downtown administrators?
It does, yes.
So this may be a strange question, but is there any way to designate a difference between downtown administrators and the principals and the assistant principals? Why are they all on one schedule?
Right now, you, excuse me, I defer to Dr. Flonker or Mr. Flowers, but right now, this person you only have, as I see it and we see it, there's, you only have two salary schedules that have been presented to you, the one you voted on in March, well, the board voted on, and I understand the board voted on in March, and the quote index salary schedule that has been presented by the principals and vice principals. So those are the only two before you right now, so regardless of, unless you or the board would decide to try to differentiate some other way and have a separate third schedule for the quote downtown administrators, you don't have anything before you to consider on that issue.
Well, I guess my question is that, is that if you're adding up all of those salaries and taking an average of what an administrator, a person makes, I think that adding in downtown salaries to what the principals are doing, I'm not sure that that's a clear picture of really what our principals are taking home, if that makes sense.
Thanks, then. I think that through DESI guidelines, not only are administrators, including building principals, assistant principals, district office folks, there are other people coded as administrators according to DESI guidelines and how you have to report that information.
Also, my understanding in talking to Mr. Flowers, it was somebody from the committee, from the community that asked for this on the second night, and so you understand, the index is tied to the teacher's salary schedule, and the way it works is the teachers get a raise, administrators get the same amount, as you've heard Mr. Leaks' presentation, it's all tied to the teacher's salary schedule. So there's no differentiating between one group or another, it's all tied based on the teacher's salary schedule.
So if we were to look at this index more closely, then would this help us moving forward, and then from year to year that we're not looking at this?
Well, one of the things the Ad Hoc Committee is charged to do after we present the recommendations on these ones that we were given at the last meeting, is to look into that schedule and compare it to other districts and try to come up with a really good stipend free, except for perhaps the things you get for having a doctorate and certain things that couldn't be allowed without a stipend, and come up with a good presentation to the board of what we'd recommend for that, that would be very competitive for our area. When I looked over the index that the principals had presented, I, what I did was I took the packet that we were given at the Ad Hoc Committee meeting that had everybody's salary, all the administrator's salaries, including all their stipends and everything, and I just made a list of them and I added them, you know, I linked them up next to the index as it is, they should be the same, or pretty close to the same, but there were some that were pretty different, and so I, one of the reasons is because the, well, one of the things about the index is that the $5,000 would have to come out of every single one of them, but there were also ones like, I was looking at an elementary principal's salary who was at step one, and that person, their salary was $83,050, but on the elementary principal's step one index, it's $85,349, so that's a $3,000 difference for that step one. So I think that index just needs to be looked at a little bit more to make sure that it reflects exactly what we've got going forward.
Ms. Stanford, respond.
Oh, yes, of course.
I think when that salary schedule was presented, that included the $5,000, what I would recommend is to remove all headings on the index, take...
Don't they still fall in the same columns?
No, no, then you'd have elementary principals who might fall in range two rather than range three, and so if you took their stipend, subtracted the $5,000 as requested by the Ad Hoc Committee, add 2%, place them on a step, it could be this year's step, step one time, every principal would lose money, and the headings would be irrelevant at this point in time.
I guess I wouldn't understand how that would work then.
There's a motion on the floor.
Yes, and this is discussion.
Yeah, I would like to add that, you know, I'm not ready to vote on an administrative index without at least seeing what the teacher index would end up being as well, I mean, I don't think we've had time to study this index, is my personal opinion.
So what was presented?
We've approved a salary schedule for the teachers already, but if this, this index is based on, I mean, I would see that there would be an index for the teacher's salary as well, because there's, there are stipends that they receive as well, are there not?
Yes. Because I don't know what that looks like. What is, what are teachers, and how that looks different than what the index that I saw? I'm just trying to wrap my mind around it.
Well, the index, the administrative index just puts all the stipends, instead of listing the stipends separately, they just come on in there, so...
I left some of them that I brought with me, do you guys want to look at some of these? It's the ones that, the ones that are presented with the principal saying, and then the numbers that I looked at, that are the basis that they would move them onto a different column. I'm happy to get into it, do you want to take a look?
Sure, go ahead, please.
This is the administrators.
Can I ask Mr. Rucker a question? Mr. Rucker, how many years you been on, served on the board?
Some will tell you.
All right, how many complaints have you ever got about travel or mileage for administration? Have you ever got any complaints? Me either.
But nobody knew that they were on there, see, that's the thing, is nobody knew those stipends were on there, I'm telling you, thank you! Until February and March, nobody knew, they were not approved, we didn't know superintendent's council, we didn't know superintendent's council, we didn't know night duty, but for some we did, for a lot we didn't know, and we still don't know, I just found out today that the administration, the principals had negotiated their contracts, I didn't know that, I didn't know that's how they got MSTA dues paid for them at $2,900.
Ms. Stanford, calm down.
I did not know this.
He just asked me a question and I answered, that didn't mean for you that he didn't have to, you know, go off and he's been on us here, we all understand. Ma'am, listen, okay, I'll let you finish, okay, I'll let you finish.
I did not know that we had that, I did not know, because that has never been presented to the board, that the administrators had a negotiation, I didn't know.
We don't.
We don't.
We don't.
Okay, well, in an email that I got today, states...
Go right ahead, Ms. Stanford.
The email states that a negotiation with administrators and principals send representatives to that group that they came up with the MSTA dues that are paid for, I'm assuming there are other negotiations in that email, I'm just saying the email, I'm not even naming who sent me the email.
I sent the email, I can respond to it.
Okay.
And I have met with principal groups in regard to their salaries, not this year, because of the turmoil we've been in, but I have, and through many of those conversations, not only with me, but with my predecessor, there were things that had been discussed and negotiated, and MSTA dues, professional dues were a part of that.
And see, and that is information that I did not have as a board member, I did not know existed, and Mr. Rucker, my emotion that comes with that is every time we turn around, there is something new that we didn't know before, something that has been going on that, oh, I didn't know that, and it becomes very hard to make decisions with taxpayer dollars that are supposed to go for the kids, when I don't, I don't even know all the pinnacles that are out there, so excuse me for my emotion there, but it seems like this is a huge task that can't be decided in tonight.
Okay, Ms. Stanford, I'll just speak, and I appreciate your emotion and your passion, but I need you to understand, there are seven members of the board, and we all have passion for children, or we wouldn't be on the board.
Absolutely.
And so what needs to happen is, we need to talk to each other, not at each other, we need to ask questions without being accusatory, every time you hear or get an email doesn't necessarily mean it's true.
Once in a while, I think, once in a while.
I think once in a while, I think maybe you just might want to ask the question of the person in charge without being accusatory, now, maybe you don't intend to be accusatory, and I'm not saying that you are, but that seems to be the way that it comes across in every email that you send. We'll have a meeting, and everything is fine, we think everything is fine, and then maybe you find something when you get home, I don't know, but if you do, that's fine, we can talk about it as professionals. Right now, I'm gonna just say this, the way things are going, it seems as though someone, and I'm not calling any names, is trying to take down the district, and I don't know why that is, but that's what it seems, and that's where the divisiveness is coming from. We're pitting teachers against administrators, we're pitting the administrators, our principals at our buildings against those that are in this building, and it's never been like that before, and it doesn't need to be like that now, I'm sure that the community itself is wondering what the heck is going on downtown, because the only thing they know is what they're reading in the media, okay? So the problem with that to me is that there are good things going on in the district, but they don't make the front page, they make the back page. All the negative turmoil that seems to be divisive of our district is making the front page, and I don't, I don't understand that, because we have a good school district here, we have a good service. Now, my passion's coming out just a little bit, just bear with me for a second, and I don't want to really belabor this point, and I don't want to reflect too much and make this drawn out, but when I was an elected official in the State House, I was proud of this school district right here, because a lot of changes that they want to make at the State House, we already done them. We've already done them, and we've made them work, and so I could always say, you know what, what you want to do, we already do that, so you don't have to get involved and tell your district they have to do this, give them an opportunity to do it on their own, and that staved off a lot of interference, I believe, from state government, because I could actually say, we're already doing some of those things, and I'm proud of that, I'm still proud of St. Joseph School District, and I'm not leaving here until my terms are up, it doesn't matter, I've been asked to resign, I've been verbally cautioned in social media, in emails, in letters in the air, on the phone, I am not going anywhere until my term is over with, I'm just gonna tell you that.
I just want to say one thing in response to that, and I do believe that we're all passionate about kids, and when we have our committee meetings, it's clear that we do, we've just got, we've got a huge butt of things, I, I didn't bring the state auditor here, they're here, I did not bring the FBI here, they're here, I did not bring a federal grand jury that subpoenaed, they both know this stuff, but they did, and I did not start a lawsuit that is against this district. So though we have many good things that are going on with our kids and teachers and staff, clearly there are some entities out there that think we have some things that need to be cleaned up, all right, fair enough?
I agree with you 100%, I don't know, a district across this state that doesn't have something that probably needs to be cleaned up, but I need to say this, as board members for the school district of St. Joseph, Missouri, we need to be champions for the district, we cannot be constantly, at mouth in our administration, cutting to the bone our, those that we do not agree with, because everybody has an opinion that's in this room, and everybody thinks they're right, but that does not mean that you can force your will, your opinion on me, and I'm wrong, because I tell you what, in our classrooms today, we call that bullying. Isn't that what we call it, we call it bullying, and we need to stop it, if you have a difference of opinion, there are channels, ways to do it professionally, that everybody gets the message, and the point is well taken, it does not have to be at such a passionate level that it appears to be accusatory, or appears to be bullying, because I'm gonna tell you, in the end, we're all gonna lose, and when we all lose, our children are gonna lose, and those are the last ones we want to lose in, thank you, that's all I have to say.
And just to add to that too, Mr. Rucker, we need the appropriate information and accurate information too, for us to be able to make the best decisions, and, you know, that's, that's where we need to, that's where we need to be, and at least on this issue right now, I don't feel comfortable with what the information we have, but having said that, Mr. Briggs, is the motion, is this an appropriate motion?
As I indicated earlier, that since you have an existing approval or vote from March 24th, a motion to change that or amend it needs to be in the nature of a motion to amend what you did previously by, you know, whether you're eliminating something and substituting something else for it, that motion needs to be in the nature of a motion to amend the prior motion, as I said before, that requires a two-thirds majority vote, which is five members. There's a motion on the floor, I don't, with respect, Mr. Snead, I don't know if you used the word amend, but I...
No, but I said from this day forward, I didn't say yesterday, we need to get rid of these stipends. I'm not sure if I'm giving up here.
Well, he wants you to say that this motion that you have, we would vote to amend our previous vote.
It's not a motion to amend, it's a motion to, from this day forward, no more stipends, that means that everything else that's been voted on is already in, I'm just saying, put the duties that have been approved in the salaries, and from this day forward, other than the doctorate, no more stipends for anybody, get rid of them, nobody understands them, get rid of them.
That would mean that for next year, everything would remain the way that it already is?
Yeah, we're already, May 14th was when the contracts were supposed to go out, we're losing our administrator.
To me, or for the $5,000 to go away, we have to reverse our previous vote?
No, no, because that wasn't approved, and that's in the new yellow highlights in the mileage and night duty, no?
The $5,000 was approved.
Mr., Mr. President...
Not to my knowledge, it wasn't.
The salary book that you approved, that this board, not you personally, but this board approved on March 24th, included a salary schedule for night duty, travel stipends, and that $5,000 is in that, what you, this board approved?
No, that, because, is that right though, because it was in the yellow highlights, and you told me that those things in the yellow highlights were not approved?
The $5,000 was in travel, night duty, approved in March, the things on the highlight were things that either were not previously approved by the board, or...
Okay, timeout.
Or amendments to what had already been approved by the board.
Timeout, so you're telling me in March, that stuff... Timeout, so you're telling me in March, that stuff was in there without me knowing, I'm voting on it?
Yes.
Well, that's, that's, well, that's a [BLEEP].
Mr. Snead? Mr. Snead? Okay. Board member, board member, I need you to calm down a little bit.
I'm not excited, there are money on top of it, I know, we're all right here.
Listen, Mr. Briggs, can we, can I make the motion to amend? Help me with the wording here, amend?
I can do it, just tell me what I'm supposed to amend. It's my motion, so if you tell me, I'll, I'll do it.
So let's amend your motion, is that correct?
Yes.
To, um, take, just to take out the $5,000, is that all I need to do?
It's to amend the administrator salaries voted on on the March 24th meeting.
To, to, to remove the $5,000 stipends.
And put them on a salary schedule to give a 2% raise like the teachers have.
In one step.
In one step, is that, is that good? Looking for guidance here.
I understand, is it, is it the understanding that this, what motion you, that is being proposed or amended motion, or making, withdraw the other one and make a new motion which would be clean without disrespect?
All right, I withdraw it, Martin, you can make the motion.
You need to withdraw your second.
I'm just like, withdraw, yeah, I'm not even sure what's out there.
I didn't understand that motion.
You need, you need to-
No, we're drawing the motion.
You need to agree to withdraw the motion.
So I second, I agree to withdraw the motion, Mr. Snead.
Um, Mr. President?
Go ahead, Kathy.
I have a question. This, what you're talking about Dennis, is what the ad hoc committee initially recommended at that first, at our second meeting there?
Yep.
Um, the only thing different from the principal's proposition that they gave is that they had that index on there. Why don't we just do it like the ad hoc committee recommended there and see if that, how that goes?
What's the motion?
You want me to say it or? Well, it would be-
Right now, right now, there's no motion on the floor, so we're open to a new motion.
Well, it's going to sound the same there, pretty, pretty close, but we're going to tidy it up so that it has the, the reversal of our-
So Ms. Hodges, are you, are you proposing to take more money away from the administrators' things, the $5,000?
Well, I'm going to do the first, the first recommendation from the ad hoc committee, which is the $5,000 and a 2% raise. All right, so I mean that we, that we amend our previous vote from the March 24th meeting regarding the administrator's salary schedule to reflect the withdrawal of the $5,000 stipends and instead an increase of 2% to the base salary like the teachers have? Home, sorry Debbie, how much you got down? It's a very lot to say. We're going to amend the vote from the March 24th meeting to the administration salary schedule to remove the $5,000 stipends and instead add 2% raise.
Let's continue.
Yeah, the same, and to the base salary and the step of movement like always. Based on the ad hoc committee's recommendation. Can you do that second thing?
I'll second it.
So that discussion?
Discussion.
Did we get everything covered?
Can I read it? Mrs. Hodges amended the previous vote from March 24th meeting to the administration salary schedule to remove the $5,000 stipends and instead add 2% raise to the base salary and a step based on the ad hoc committee's recommendation.
I'm assuming, Mr. Chairman, that that motion would include then, um, all the, the other stipends with the exception of the $5,000, is that correct?
That motion does. I have another recommendation from the ad hoc committee that I would want to make a motion about after.
Yeah, so I, I just want to be clear on, on what this one is. So once, does, does that include, again, I'm sorry, I missed your answer. Uh, does that include all of the, the stipends in that or what does that do? Where are we with that, with the exception of the $5,000?
This particular motion would not address travel stipends, which the ad hoc committee has also-
Oh, we'd come back and change, make a change with that with the minimum order.
Right.
Okay, I'm fine, thank you.
Well, we put it all in one motion?
I think it's better.
Yes, we've already got a motion and a second.
Mr. President? Before you go forward, I think, just so that, because I think that you're seeking clarity, that you need to recall or remember that as I, as Ms. Hodges' motion, that the only stipend that would be eliminated from the ones you previously approved at March 24th would be the $5,000 stipend. Other stipends that are included in that extra duty or whatever schedule that you, whatever the title of it was, Fred and Doug, are, if this is adopted, would still be in effect at least for this coming year. Is that, everybody understands that?
And can I say too, we are talking about just the one-year contract here?
Yes, just for the coming year, maybe Debbie can you amend it to say for the coming year?
And is there not a study that's involved with that, with the rest of the stipends?
Yeah, that have another recommendation regarding the other things, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Flowers, could you share, we have lots of administrators here, what that reduction in pay will be so they, they will know?
I think the board used to know that. $5,000 minus about $1,700 depending on the individual, uh, $3,300.
If the travel stipends were to come out, I think that's what you want.
If the $5,000 was reduced, it's going to be an average of about $1,700, which is 2%. And so there'd be a $3,300.
Oh, I see the difference, yes, no mistake.
So, so the total reduction is in $3,300, is that correct?
Correct.
Any further discussion on this? All right, Debbie, would you call the role, please?
Mr. President? Yes. Mr. Snead?
Yes.
Mr. Haggar?
Yes.
Mr. Rucker?
Yes.
Dr. Bogin?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Anther?
Yes.
Okay. I make, whoa, whoa, I make the motion, we put all the other extra duties back in their contract, do away with stipends, and exception of the doctorate degree. From this point forward, all of it.
But they're not taken out?
They haven't been taken out, no. Nothing's been taken out.
No, 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 we have not approved all those yellow highlighted things that go into those contracts. That's what I'm talking about.
Those are, there, there are not that many and we need to, we need a motion to approve those that were highlighted in yellow. Be it, the others have already been approved.
Right, well, then my motion is to approve the highlighted, yellow, whatever it is. Minus the doctorate degree, that stays as a stipend, the only one. And, and do away with that stipend, just put it in their salaries and we'll move on here.
And again, we've, that's all been taken care of. The only thing we really have to do is to approve, uh, to make a motion to approve the, the highlighted areas because everything else has been handled in the previous-
Right, that's, that's what my motion is. But to, to not put them in as a stipend, put them in the salaries, get rid of these stipends. No more, get rid of them.
I, I think that's where the study will come in next year. And what, what I'm hoping that the board would want to do is give the administration the direction to, to do a thorough study of, of salaries of comparable school districts and come back to us with a, with a salary schedule. I think that's what Kathy is suggesting from the, from the ad hoc committee, which makes a whole lot of sense.
Okay.
So Dennis, are you wanting to make a motion to approve all of those highlights stipends that we were tasked with looking at?
Yes.
Now, the ad hoc committee, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, we'll have discussion in a moment.
There's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, so the ad hoc committee did approve all those stipends except for the travel stipends. They recommend that the travel stipends not already assigned to a contract, like the teachers have already signed their contracts. Be instead of a stipend, a reimbursement, where people get 55 cents a mile instead of a chunk of a stipend.
Okay, I did a little research on that. There's over 60 people you're going to be adding to this mileage voucher deal. Uh, first of all, they're spread out throughout the city. As far as, uh, being able to document those miles, it becomes cumbersome and is a problem because probably a principal would sign off for a vice principal. They'd be responsible for, like, if I had to go to Neely or Hyde or Hosea. First of all, the, the paperwork and the fact that maybe a mile or two is off here or there. Then people that have these hidden agendas, which I wouldn't know anybody like that here, can, can accuse somebody of, of, of not putting the right miles down or whatever. And then the potential to go over budget here. And then with 60 more people plus, you're probably going to, somebody has to write the check, somebody has to document the miles, we're probably going to have to hire another part-time worker. It's going to cause us a bundle. So, you know, for this year only, it's not that big a deal and it means a lot to the, especially to the principals and vice principals. So, you know, it's, it's not worth the fight here. Otherwise, there's no direction on how you're going to implement the mileage. I mean, it's nice to say, yeah, I, I think it's a good thing, everybody pays, gets 55 cents a mile. But it's not that easy. Somebody has to count for that, somebody has to document, somebody has to write the checks. Our, our, our financial office is, needs help right now anyway. You know, throw that burden on them again, look, it's, it's, we're in the gym, contracts are due May 14th. It's not that big a deal, it's not that big a deal.
Uh, we did discuss that in the meetings and, um, what the committee, their opinion was that everybody has to do it in other companies and they manage somehow without too much trouble.
Cam, I would like for you to speak to that if you wouldn't mind, since you're in that office? Look at you. If we're going to do away with travel stipends, I would prefer that they all be done away with. And yes, that to be fiscally accountable, it is to be accountable for the mileage. Is it doable? Yes, I think it's doable. I think we have 191 people that currently receive a travel allowance. I probably wouldn't recommend that we, don't necessarily have to do the IRS rate, but maybe we recommend that in looking at these other recommendations that the ad hoc committee is going to do, that we also do travel stipends at that time and we can put in a system for reimbursement. And the employee will be accountable for recording their mileage. You know, we can do it a couple of different ways. But yes, my, I am short-staffed and we have auditors and, um, other auditors coming in and sunshine requests coming in, but my girls are doing an outstanding job right now, so.
So you do have a system in place that you could do that?
I think we could work one out, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
I would probably not suggest that, you know, we cut a check for $5.50 every other week. I would prefer that it be turned in either on a quarterly basis or, um, twice a year.
Dr. Colvin, the, the ad hoc committee has done a lot of work in the last three, almost four weeks now that's passed. And they're to be commended for the work that they've done because they've actually set the groundwork for the next step that, that hopefully will take place between now and January. And the, the only area that, that to me is, is really up in the air, again, relates to, to the, the mileage. And it makes sense that, that we look closely at how that's handled, whether it's, whether we continue to use the system that we have now or whether we change that to a, to a mileage type of system. The only, my only thought and suggestion is that, that we take that recommendation and we, we include that as part of the study because we may find after we look at the, the, the new proposal that will be presented by the administration to the board in December or January, that, that, uh, they may not like the mileage thing at all or that they, that's the very direction they want. And rather than changing what we're doing since people do understand the, the mileage piece we have now, my suggestion is that we, we continue with it, not because we like it. Uh, we continue with it because it's something that, that, that will be easily handled by the, the business office. And that, again, part of our study includes how we will manage the, the, the travel allowance for, for individuals. And that decision can be made then in January for the 2015, 2016 school year.
That's a good point. Um, one of the things the, um, ad hoc committee discussed, just for you to know, is that if people started taking track of their mileage this year, that could be useful in planning what might be a reasonable amount in future years, something to consider.
And we could do a little pilot, we could see if we had some, some volunteers or, uh, doctors who wanted you. You might be able to assign certain folks to that very piece so that we can begin keeping track with a, a smaller number. And it would provide the, the committee with good information that, that could be, again, rolled into the, the recommendation that comes for next year. Again, just a thought.
One of the questions I asked Mr. Briggs on a couple of different search matters. As you mentioned, you have 161, Cam?
I think there's 191 more.
191, a portion of those, a good portion of those have already gone out, been signed and returned. So I don't know if we, if we are, if we have to follow that process and procedure. The other thing I would say is the administrators based their decisions on what the board chose on March 24th. And their season of, of hiring season per se is, is usually the spring. So they, based on the, the previous board vote, they're going to receive $3,300 less, a minimum, at $3,300 less next year. I would just ask the board to consider thinking about them and, and treating them right. Because if we're going to continue to take money away from them, they need to know prior to June 9th so they can make decisions for, for themselves and their families. I just, I, I, their proposal was, was very good because every administrator took a pay cut. I think it was anywhere from $400, $500 to $1,800, $1,900. I do not believe any of them sitting in this room were expecting a $3,300 pay cut. And now we're going to cut even more in that regard. And on the administration side, we continue to cut, we continue to, to cut in, in areas. So, um, I just, I really would hope the board would consider that.
But to clarify, part of that 38, that $3,300 is coming from that $5,000 stipend that started after the school year.
And then it also sounds like that, I'm confused because it sounds like the mileage that we're paying is really not mileage, it's, it's a salary adjustment. And if that's the case, then I think, I, I think we ought to be honest about that. And if that's what we need to look at as a compensation, then that's what the, the task force are, and the board need to, need to look at.
And I think in some instances, that's exactly what it was. And, and that's why, once again, by taking- And that's why, once again, by taking the time to study exactly what we have and really a pilot in terms of what does this mileage mean, because we may find that we can't afford it. 55 cents is a lot of money per mile. On the other hand, we may find that it is the right thing, but when we do away with these stipends, and frankly, that's what I've heard this public saying, they don't want the stipends, and they want us to be transparent in terms of when there's a salary out there, it's the full salary. And by, again, so that the principals are not losing more, we continue with that process, but we do a pilot with a certain number of the administrators who are willing to do that and see what this 55 cents looks like to be, so that we'll know whether we'll want to roll that into next year or not. Again, we end up with the administrators losing the $3,300, and we can say, well, no, I know the $5,000. I don't even want to get into that. The point is, next year, they'll take home less than they took home this year, and let's forget about whether it's with or without the $5,000, and we'll have a chance to look at something that will tell us whether the 55 cents makes sense or not, or whether doing the travel allotments and then reporting that travel allotment from this point on. Again, I just encourage just to, just vote on something and move on.
I would think that since they are taking a cut, they have shown good faith that they're willing to do that, because I know that they've been accused that they aren't willing to ever take a pay cut. They have come right out and said that we would give that $5,000 back, that's off the table. If you want to put us on this index to where they are comparable to what the teacher salaries are gonna be moving forward. I think that they have shown good faith that they believe in our school district, they believe in our kids, and I know that everybody is saying that the principals and the administrators who are leaving, it's all for the money. Quite frankly, that's not the truth. There's a culture in this community and in this district that people are not valued. We have put a ton of money into these administrators. And those that have told me that for mental health reasons, it's easier to drive 30 or 40 minutes away, I can't blame them. I really can't. It breaks my heart because these people worked their heinies off, and I feel like they have been attacked in the media, social media, and they are made to feel like they've done something wrong, and they haven't done anything wrong. And I've said all along, if these stipends were supposed to have been board-approved, they should have been board-approved. I'm not gonna argue that. But I do not feel like we can make our administrators feel like they are worthless. And right now, we talked about, I've seen a lot of crap in the last 10 years, and I've been sitting out there instead of up here. So I've seen a lot, I've watched a lot, and these are people, I've worked in a building for 10 years, I know what they do. It's not easy being an administrator. Teachers that I know are saying they deserve to have more pay than we do because they are the ones who are on the front line. Anything happens in that building, it is their butts on the line. It is not the teacher. And I'm all for the teachers, you all know that, but there has to be a realistic way of going about this. And if we were supposed to, and this, decisions on this were made before I was ever on this board, if they're gonna have to take pay cuts, they should have had plenty of notice so that they could have looked elsewhere. I think that's only fair to them. Any other business would not be waiting till after contracts were due and putting them through this. The emotional turmoil that these people are going through is not fair. And what does it ultimately do? It hurts our kids. I got on this board because I've given 21 years of my life already to this district, and I want to do what's right for our kids, our staff, and this community as a whole. That's my agenda. I don't know what everybody else's is, but, and I've said all along, if you have some other reason for being on here, get off the board. Because what it comes down to is what happens in those buildings, and I know for a fact that if you do not have proper staff, proper administration, kids suffer daily. If you do not have that environment where they can be successful, then we hurt them every day, and that's not what we should be doing.
Mr. Briggs, just in response to Ms. Bruce's comments, my understanding that the vote that was previously taken was an amendment to, which was, I believe, passed unanimously, was to delete the $5,000 stipend, and I assume that that was for all of the districts, and that, the way the salary schedule that you approved on March 24th did contain, as I read it, and Mr. Flowers, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but, same old school district salary schedule, travel and night duty.
We can hear you.
Excuse me, I apologize. I can be an attorney and not make myself heard as unknown, but speaking in the microphone. Just to clarify so that there's no misunderstanding, the board voted to delete the $5,000 stipend, do a 2% raise plus a step. That's what you approved. As I understand the salary schedule that you previously approved, I just want to make sure everybody's clear again, that the travel allowance, which is in range one on what you previously approved, would still be in place. Correct?
Cam? Yes, that is correct. Could I?
I apologize. I'm just, based on what they voted on, there's a travel schedule, item one, travel allowance, column one lists travel items, and number two, range two, is night duty, and that's where the sum of that appeared to be $5,000. But if I'm incorrect, I want to just get that clarified.
That is not wrong exactly. The $5,000 was divided into travel and night duty, and so by eliminating the $5,000, you take $2,100 out of travel and $2,900 out of night duty for administrators.
So that, as the board approved, then, Mr. Flowers, the travel scheduled allowance on the schedule previously approved by the board in range one could be a high school principal, $3,800 for night, for school travel allowance.
Reduce to $1,700.
So, Mr. Chairman, again, for clarification, since Doug is up there, so what we've actually done, right now, as it stands, what we have approved is for the travel allowance as it has been for the last, who knows how many years, is in effect. And the only change really is we've eliminated the $5,000 stipend, you can put it wherever you want to put it, and the, that was, nope, I'm gonna chill. But what it does is it reduces the administrative salary by, again, the $3,300, whatever, and the travel as we know it is in effect. And the only way that travel would change would be that we approve, we rescind the travel from the previous motion, and we then vote in the 55 cents. Is that correct?
Dennis's motion does not include leaving off the travel of those highlighted ones.
Mr. President, one other problem is there still will not be a salary schedule approved by the board. And so you have a salary schedule that you've approved, you have the admin index, and what you voted on tonight is neither one of those. And therefore, I cannot get contracts out until there's a salary schedule approved by the Board of Education. I'm not sure when that will take place.
Mr. President, since I made that last motion, I intended that that just be the same salary schedule that was already approved, just minus the $5,000. Is that what it sounded like?
The 2013-14 salary schedule.
So that is the intent there, Mr. Flowers?
Which was approved back in March.
But I thought I heard Mr. Briggs and Ms. Slaver, they talked about eliminating the $5,000 and adding 2% as they did with teachers.
Yes, that's right.
And so therefore, you have no salary schedule in front of you that would account for that 2%.
Could that be brought to us at the next meeting? These guys can't keep going without a contract.
I can't.
I'm just, how hard is it to, I mean, how long does it take to do, to look at that administrative schedule and add 2% across board?
It takes some work for not only my department, but then the business office, to readjust the salary schedules. And so that would take several days, if not closer to a week. And so that would depend on, we could present something to the Board of Education, but I cannot get contracts out, I will not get contracts out until the board votes on a salary schedule, and I'm not sure when that will take place.
Mr. Flowers, can you, can you have that, this request here, could you have that done this week? It's Monday. You've got the rest of this week, and possibly, possibly we can come.
If we're telling you to put 2% in there, why, I mean, it's not gonna be a, we're giving you the direction to go ahead and do that.
Mr. Briggs, can we let people that contracted and approved salary schedule?
Could you have the old schedule and add 2% to it, just like?
Well, I understood, I understood that the subject maybe having to be re-voted because you clarified it, Ms. Hodges, that the, what the intent of the motion was to amend the prior motion to delete the $5,000 and increase the prior salary schedule for administrators that the board approved by 2% plus a step.
Exactly.
That's what I understood, so.
So there is a salary schedule that we voted, 2% to the old salary schedule.
So you're gonna put me on the spot. So would any board member want to look at that? And so my character and integrity has been attacked over the last six, eight weeks.
You know what, let's not go there.
Let's not go there.
Let's just get this taken care of. Now, we know, we know what the old schedule was, the 2013-2014 schedule. Add 2% to that schedule, allow the administrators to move one step, and then we have it, we should have it resolved. And we'll have a committee then put together a study that will give us good information on what our salary schedule needs to look like for this year 2015-2016. Let's not make this any more complicated than it needs to be. We've noted on that. That's the intent of this board, and, Mr. Flowers, if there are any complaints about the work, those complaints need to go directly to Dr. Zolontin. He is the superintendent of schools, and he'll be responsible for your work, and we'll hold him responsible for the 2%, and those kinds of things in the contract, in the salary schedule. So I would suggest that you let him work with you, and I understand you've got to get this done, and I'm not trying to be nasty to you or anyone else. I just want us to be able to get contracts into our administrators' hands as quickly as possible so that we can, again, move on, and we have to trust you. I trust you. The 2% is 2%. I can sit down here, I can put it on my, this darn thing and figure it out once I stick it in there, but I, I'm not gonna, you can do that, you can do that tomorrow, for heaven's sakes. Let's just move on. Yes.
Hooray.
So we're good on that?
I think you directed us. I think you, from what I have, now, you look at respect, there's another motion on the board.
That's right.
Is there, is there any further discussion on the motion to approve all these highlighted areas that have not been prior, previously approved?
Yes. And that doesn't include the 53 cents? No, no, I was just explaining that, that the ad hoc committee had recommended.
Okay, so what we're doing is those that the ad hoc committee looked at, they've already approved those?
Well, they recommended everything be approved except the travel stipends. Dennis's motion is that everything be approved, including the travel.
And then come back with the study and pick solid.
And there was a second.
There was a second.
I seconded it.
Let's call the roll.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
No.
Mr. Rex?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
No.
Mrs. Danford?
No.
Mrs. Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
Can I interject here, because this sort of kind of got out of order? As the policy chairman, now it's sort of, kind of after the fact, can we do a little house cleaning? So is it okay for me to make the motion to actually have the ad hoc committee? Is it called ratify the creation? Second.
Go right in.
Okay. For our policy, what, do I have to read the motion or do we have to? Okay. In order to ensure compliance with board policy BCE, I move with the board ratify the creation, excuse me, of the ad hoc committee by the board president on, at the May 12th board meeting, and to ratify the chain, or the charge of the ad hoc committee to review stipends and make recommendations thereon to the board. And if you look at the minutes Brad's charged to the ad hoc committee from our last meeting was to look at the stipends that had been highlighted, that had not been previously approved, and that was the charge, and they were to report back to, at this meeting, which we've done. So this is just a little bit of a house cleaning.
Second.
Any discussion? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Rector? Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mrs. Bruce?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Okay, next item, these are the first readings on some policies that we've been working on. Where do you want to address these?
We met.
I believe we can do them all at once if you want.
Okay. Okay, we actually met, the board policy committee that has actually turned back into existence. We had not had that for several years. So the first one that is, that we're looking at is the renewal of board policy BBFA, which is basically a board member conflict of interest and financial disclosure. That is something that we have to do every 10 years, so we're just asking that we re-evaluate on the same schedule that we've always been. The next one is board policy JEC, which is school admissions, and this comes from MSBA. There were some changes and some wording, really doesn't affect the meat of the policy itself, we're just accepting the recommendations that MSBA. Board policy JGF, disciplined reporting and records, and again, they just made some changes because of different things that had taken place legislatively and in court cases. Again, just updating to what MSBA has recommended. Board policy JHCD, administration of medications to students, and this is again from MSBA, making that recommendation that we make sure that we have qualified staff who give out those medications to the students. I think a lot of this has to do with the diabetic and asthma. Those are very serious things, and we want to make sure that only those that are qualified can administer those medications and take care of their kids properly. and take care of the kids properly. So again, we're just asking to approve what MSBA, the changes that they have made. And we can talk about it instant that we have that repulsed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, the only discussion I had is that, Lori, I sat in on those meetings with you, and I, again, I mentioned this in the meeting, and I hope you understood what I was saying, because let me tell you, you've done an amazing job already. I am, I am thrilled with the work that you have put into this, and I just worry that if you continue to work as hard as you have, that these policies will kill you. But thank you for doing it, because let me tell you, you have done a yeoman's job, and I appreciate it very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you. 21 years of bylaws, it's all the same.
Any other questions? Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mr. Stephen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Zolontin, you would provide us the superintendent's report, please.
Yes, a couple of things. As summer school enrollment, we started summer school, and in 2013, on day one, we had 3,588 kids. This year, we have 3,657. So you can see that's up almost 70, right up 60. Then on day two, we had 3,705, and this year, on day two, we had 3,766. So again, holding true to about 59 kids, increasing. Construction update, the city should be approving, if they haven't already, tonight at their city council meeting for the final plat. And, I don't know if it's still back there, but we're working to be able to get a temporary occupancy permit as soon as everything is checked off. One of the things to keep in mind, the maintenance staff is got a big charge, and we're leaning on them this summer. They're also already got everything busy, working, cleaning, updating, refreshing. As you heard Mr. Hartigan say, we've got two new buildings under air conditioning construction, but we are moving 147 teachers this year over the summer to new classrooms. So that's a little bit of stress. Hilliard did a great job in coming through, Hilliard Chemical Company, and then to help us with boxes. We had ordered lots of boxes and had them, but didn't have all the lids, so they've come through and fixed it. As we are, Power School was rolling over right now, which means we've had to shut that system down for a few days, and that'll roll over. But at the end of April, we had attendance up in every single building, some buildings as much as 12 and 14%. Discipline is down in one building alone by over 300 discipline for us this year versus last year. Yes, and that was a very, very challenging building. That was a Title I building. And our EOC scores, the government reports are very good, but we want to make sure that those finalize. We did have our Hilliard Cleanest Building Awards, and we were kind of divided into different groups. One was Benton, excuse me, Bodie in Group A. Bodie won, they edged out Benton. Group B, Webster edged out Coleman. Group C, Hosea edged out Mark Twain. Then, let's see, again, Pickett edged out Pershing. So what a great job those engineers have done, the students have kept our buildings. Welcome for Terry Guy, please. Terry, Terry was recognized by the MASSP, Northwest MASSP, that Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals, as our Assistant Principal of the Year. And the last thing I have is, we did have Captain Gibbs' art training last week. We had 52 people trained, and that was at no charge to the district. So we were blessed to have those 52 people trained, teachers from going to Hardin Park and so forth. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
No, that's not all you have. Your daughter was a second runner-up in this Missouri pageant.
Mr. Chairman, I have a request. From now on, can we get Fred's superintendent report back up to the first part of the meeting instead of, can we do that? Thank you.
I do want to say, our administrators do a great job taking care of kids, and Lori, you said it very well. Because when things happen at the building level, they're the ones that, it's their tail on the line. And they do a fabulous job. They motivate their staff, they're there every day, and I'm honored to be able to work for them and work with them. So they do a fabulous job. My hat's off to them and everything that they do, because all of those great things happen because of them.
Thank you, sir. Next item is meetings and events, upcoming meetings and events. And then the last item, I believe I'll ask for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
First and a second.
Oh, did you already say it? Sorry, didn't hear.
Debbie, please call the roll.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Rector? Dr. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hodges?
Yes.
Mrs. Danford?
Yes.
Mr. Stephen?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all for being here this evening.